Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of April 8th, 2020. We are on room, and this is our third meeting we've been doing it. I thank you all for your patience. This is also being streamed and broadcast live from WHCA, and it's being recorded for use for the later date if need be. As soon as we get through the first couple of things, I'm going to take a roll call so everyone knows what members are here, because keep in mind, they can't see us, and I can see you, and you can see me. The general population cannot see us. So I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Would you also join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
To the United States of America.
United States.
To the republic. For which it stands.
For which it stands.
Nation, God.
Under God.
Liberty and justice.
Liberty and justice. Thank you. The last couple of meetings, I had lists of how I was going to...
How I'm going to call on people.
Bob, you're muted.
Thank you.
Bob, you're muted. Bob, you're muted.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll back up a little bit. You couldn't hear me?
No.
No.
Okay. I had lists before on how I called on people to vote, and they were just actually handwritten different orders. So this evening, I'm going to call on everyone in alphabetical order. I'm also going to explain a few things as we go. If I'm not calling on you, wave me, I guess is the term that I'm supposed to use, and I'm going to be looking at the bottom. Mr. Cullody told me how to do that. So, Mr. Boyce, roll call.
Yes.
Here. Ms. Byers. Mr. Cullody.
Yeah.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah.
Mr. Scriven. Mr. Scriven. Chris, I think you're muted.
There you are.
Bye.
Bye.
Chris, are you muted? Because I can, I could see you a minute ago.
He was here.
I know he was, but I think maybe I've lost him.
There he is.
Chris, you back? I am, yes. Chris? Fred Small? Can you hear me? Yes, I can.
And I know Allie Taylor was having some issues getting on. I can see that she's trying to connect to audio right now, so...
Okay. Bob Hayes, here. I'm at the bottom of the list. Allie Taylor. She's having some connectivity problems. We can wait a second. Fred, you can see she's trying to get on.
Yeah, I mean, I can see her name, and it says connecting to audio, and she had given me a quick call, asking me for some information, because she was trying to get on, and then, oh, it looked like it was working, she said, so...
Allie is connecting to audio. I can see that. She didn't connect to audio. She's having trouble with it. I can see what you can see.
Yeah.
Allie, are you on?
I'm finally on.
Okay, so we have all ten, all ten members present and accounted for. I'm going to jump around a little bit. I want to thank everybody for the six o'clock. I moved it an hour, because today is Passover, and with respect to everyone, I think it's important that we stick together and respect each other's wishes, and I had some desire to move this meeting to six. So I want everybody to bear with me. Thank you very, very much. The first order of business is going to be the FY 2021 budget and local assessment. Okay, wait a minute. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2020.
Some move. Second.
Second.
Okay, keep in mind, nobody can, I can see you all, but Mr. Boyce, did you move it?
I seconded.
Who moved it?
Andy.
Okay, when we do that, please say, Mr. Small moved, Mr. Boyce seconded. Michelle, did you get that?
Mr. Small, okay, thank you.
Mr. Small, Mr. Boyce seconded. Is that correct?
Yeah, I was drowned out, but that's fine.
Okay, everybody's okay, good with that. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes, and we had to move in a second. Is there any discussion on April 1st, 2020 minutes? We have to do a roll call vote again. Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Chris, Howard.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes.
Chris Scriven. Chris, are you muted?
Looks like he fell off again.
Yeah.
I'm going to move by Mr. Scriven. Fred?
Yes.
Allie?
Yes.
Bobby Hayes, yes. Mr. Scriven. Are you having connectivity issues, if you can hear me? Chris, are you back? I think he's back. I see. Chris, can you hear me audio?
He doesn't have an audio signal next to his name.
Yeah, see, Dan, are you waving at me? Because down below, I have, I have a wave. From Dan.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you. You just checking to see if I'm paying attention, Dan?
No, when I made the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Bob, this is the other Chris, Howard. Chris, I just texted Chris Scriven. He said he's having some technical difficulties, so hopefully he can dial back in.
Okay. Remind me when Chris gets back in. I have a nine zero to accept the minutes. I will get back to Chris when he gets his connectivity back. Hopefully, it will be soon, because I was going to move on to the FY 21 budget, so I'll wait a minute to see if Chris comes back on, because there's a few things that I'm sure he's going to want to hear. Can someone email Chris?
Bob, I'm going to try and text him the phone number to dial in.
Okay, thank you. In the meantime, I have a couple of emails that were sent to me, and I'm not going to them verbatim, because one of them is fairly lengthy. Members of the Whitman-Hanson School Committee, I believe that you all received these emails. I am writing to you as Whitman resident and grandmother for students currently enrolled in Whitman Public Schools. Having listened to the last school committee meeting, your motion was made to pass a budget failed to include funding for four additional teachers to reduce class size. I can feel, I feel compelled to share my frustration with you. At a March 4th meeting, I presented a spreadsheet that compared the current projected enrollments in the three elementary schools and respectfully requested that the fund be added to the FY 21 budget to restore four elementary teaching positions that had been cut last year. The $280,000 cost was subsequently added to the budget at the March 12th meeting. Last Wednesday, two of the virgins of the budget were presented by the superintendent, one with and one without the money for these four positions. Unfortunately, a motion was made to support the lower figure. I understand for technical reasons, vote to set the FY 21 budget at $55,40,000, $40,238 failed. I trust another effort will be made to pass the budget, so the two towns will have time to review the budget before their respective town meetings. I once again respectfully request the school committee to support a budget that includes funding to ensure the four elementary students. I will not belabor the point of how important it is for the youngest students in the system to start off with an equitable opportunity succeed. However, if you truly believe that the projected elementary class size is not a priority for FY 21 budget, and then I have a free, a cost-free solution to this problem, who teach two teachers from the Indian Head to the Duval School that doesn't cost a penny? I have another email that was received, I believe, today. It says, Dear Schools Committee Members and Superintendent, and I'm reading these two, waiting on Chris, but I'm reading them to you, because we told people if they wrote in, we would do our very best to try and hear what they have to say. I'm writing to you as a concerned parent. I have a child Duval Elementary School in first grade. He currently has 25 kids in his class, which is outrageous. This is across the board with both, this is across the board with both classes at Duval. We need every teacher we have. If we lose teachers, class size increase. This is not okay. We need to support our schools in Whitman. I know that Hanson doesn't seem to have the same problem. You're supposed to be fighting for our kids and their education, but it seems like this is not the case. Duval has a higher rate of low-income families, and they cannot afford private schools. Why is Duval not treated equally like the others in the district? Please do not say they are, because we all know they're not. We need teachers, we need all the teachers we have. Taking teachers away will take away from the children and their educational needs. Do what's best for our children. I hope this is an easy choice for you as, I hope this is as an easy choice for you as all, as we choose you all to do what's right. Keep our teachers. These were two concerned parents. Those are the two letters. Chris, are you back? I am, Bob, thanks. Okay, I figured, did you hear most of what the letter said? I did, I already read it. Okay, and I knew you got it. Chris, can we go back to the minutes of April 1st? Michelle's trying to get your attention, Bob.
It was okay. Excuse me, Chair, I'm sorry. For public comment, we need to say the person's name and their town.
Okay, I'm sorry. The first letter was from Kathleen Otina in Whitman.
Thank you.
And the second letter was from Melissa Moriarty, and I'm not sure of the town, but I would assume that she's from Whitman, because she's talking about the Duval School, and she has the students and the superintendent saying yes. So, okay, Michelle, I'm sorry. So, Chris, I'm looking, I have a motion and a second, and everyone's voted but you to accept the minutes of April 1st, 2020. Yes. Okay, so it's 10-0 vote. Thank you, Chris. Next up is the FY, we're on the FY 2021 budget. As you know, last week, we had a five-four split. Five for the budget, four not for the budget. We had a reconsideration vote that shouldn't have taken place. We, my fault, I'll take the blame. I always thought the side that, to reconsider, had to be the side that had the most votes, but that's not true. It's the prevailing side, and the nodes were prevailing. So we made a vote afterwards to reconsider, and then we never revoted the number. So I'm opening it up to discussion or to anyone that would like to make a motion on the numbers that were presented, and then we can go into discussion about the budget. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would make the motion to set the FY budget. Oh, I'm sorry.
Fred, Dawn's, I'm sorry, Dawn's ahead of you. She had her hand up. You might not be able to see her.
Before we move forward, I know you mentioned you had read a portion of the email. Was that for consideration of time, or is it possible for you to read the complete public comment email that was submitted? I don't...
Oh, there's, wait a minute, there is another page to it. There was a big graph on the email with the projections. It doesn't cost a penny, was where I left off. Significantly smaller average classes. Is that the one you're talking about, Dan?
Just the complete public comment is what I'm asking that was submitted to be on record.
Significantly smaller average classes than what's the harm in moving teachers around to give Duval students the advantage of smaller class sizes this year? Of course, I'm not advocating this as a solution. Current situation that modifies the open meeting laws and prevents me speaking directly to you during this meeting has forced me to take this approach. Please take a look at these two sets of numbers. If you cannot live with the predicted class sizes in the second scenario, how can you not support adding the funds required to give all the Whitman-Hanson Elementary School children, Indian Head, Conley, Duval, the same opportunity succeed? Please support the budget containing $280,000 for these teaching positions. Respectfully, Kathleen A. Otina, and she definitely is from Whitman. And that's the end of that. It was another page.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Now, Dawn? Am I going right to Fred?
I'd like to make a motion to set the FY 21 budget at $55,40,238.
Second the motion, Dan Cullody?
What was the last of three numbers, Fred? $55,000?
$55,40,238. $55,40,238. That is the required, what the administration considers to be the required amount for FY 21.
And Mr. Cullody, you seconded it. Am I correct?
Correct.
Discussion. There's no discussion? Yeah, Bob, I raised my hand. I don't know if you can see me. Go ahead. I'm just thinking that now that Whitman's postponed their meeting, we don't, and I think we've consulted our legal counsel on this, we don't have a need to submit a budget at this point. So I think we should think about that before we go ahead and vote something. I believe, Jeff?
I spoke with counsel today. Whitman has moved their meeting tentatively to June 3rd. I believe Hanson's meeting is June 15th.
That's correct.
After speaking with counsel today, we don't have to set a budget today. We are within the 45 days, and these even new legislation that came out today that's in your packet about a potential, if we don't have a budget by July 1st, what that means to us. And that's in your packet. But according to Andy today, in putting our two heads together with the movement of the Whitman Town Meeting, we are well within the 45 days of setting up a budget number for both communities.
Does everyone hear that?
Yes, I'm just curious. So we're sort of picking up from where we made that issue or mistake, but I'm not voting in favor of Mr. Small's motion, because it does not include those four teachers. And I heard from the same people in town, and even more, how critical that is. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Chris Howard.
Yeah, so I think, you know, similar to the point that I was trying to make in the last meeting, there are a lot of unknowns right now. So we know that state revenue is going to change. We know that revenues for the town of Whitman are going to change. We know revenues for the town of Hanson are going to change. And it's likely, depending on what happens to the rest of the school year, that the school budget is going to change, and that's going to impact us as well. So to me, there is a ton of uncertainty, or there's certainty that things are going to change, perhaps is a better way of saying it. And for us to responsibly set that budget, to me, we're not there. There are so many moving parts, some of which I think we will understand a little bit better in the days and weeks to come. In terms of adding teachers, and in terms of making sure that we're supporting the needs of the students and giving them the teachers they need, I am all in for that. My issue becomes, I think we really got to be thoughtful as to what's happening, because we need to be really mindful of the fact that this is, this is going to be an extraordinary time that we're all about to face. And I heard it in the Whitman Select meeting last night, I heard it in the Hanson Select meeting last night. We are really going to have to be thoughtful about how we do this to make sure that we maintain as a teacher. So I'm not against adding four, but I am thinking that we're getting way ahead of ourselves, because I don't think we really understand the financial picture of the district, the state, or either town at this point.
Anyone else? Mr. Small, and then Dawn's next.
We also have the ability to change our numbers right up to town meeting, but we've been kicking a can down the road, you know, so far. And yes, I think it's, we're going to see some impact statewide from us. Never thought I'd say that, but I'm glad that we don't get any substantial increases in Chapter 70 funding. The SOA is where they're probably going to hit things real hard. So the districts that were rejoicing over the amounts of money that they were looking at are probably going to lose most, if not all, of that revenue. We're looking at, yeah, probably still getting that $20 a teacher. We'll, we'll take a hit. Is on regional transportation. I'm sorry?
Per pupil, not a teacher. Okay.
Yeah, per pupil. Where we will take a hit is going to be on reimbursement for regional transportation. And you may even see 9C cuts happen for FY 20 before you even get to the FY 21 budget, as far as that goes. But the impact on that will be marginalized, because it's not a ton of money that it will cost us, so to speak, as opposed to anything else. I agree we need four teachers. I just don't know how to pay for them. And I don't know how we can go to the town, and I'm just thinking that, you know, we have a number of what we need to run the district. Unless that number changes, and I don't think it's going to go down whatsoever. It might get squeezed a little, but I don't think it's going down at all. You know, to be able to lower our budget, so to speak. The other thing that I, you know, while it's on my mind, moving teachers around, I believe that's a contractual item as well. You know, as far as you can...
You all set, Fred?
Yeah, I thought someone was just responding.
I was just going to say, Fred, we can move teachers within their certification in district if need be. We can voluntarily transfer them. Their assignment is a position. But if there's a need at a building because of enrollment, we will move teachers within their area of certification in the district.
Then I would acquiesce those decisions to our administration. That's what we're paying them for, you know, on that. I thought it might have been a contractual item that we couldn't just move people that way.
Okay, Dawn? Dawn, you have muted.
Thank you. Thank you. I recognize that life as we know it has changed with coronavirus. And going back to the fall, I remember Robbie O'Brien, you had said, when statutory method came up, we can't take our eye off the ball, right? We need to keep our focus. Coronavirus is impacting the entire world, but still, for the purpose of this committee and the policy we need to set, which is a budget, still feel like we need to focus on our goals. And I know we have a district goal of class sizes, no more than 20 in K through 3, no more than 25. We tried to for 4th and 5th grade. It's, it's really frustrating for everyone at this point. I understand. The revenue problem that we are predicting is something actually that doesn't seem new to us, right? Because I've heard it for the last four or five years, that I've been following meetings every year. Whitman has a revenue problem. Whitman has a revenue problem. Come to find out, they never really did. It was an assessment problem, to be honest with you. It was also an excess levy problem. Towns were not collecting the full 2.5% that they could under proposition 2.5. Just in the past four years, I've done the research, $400,000 in Hanson, $3 million in Whitman left in the levy. It was within 2.5%. It could have been taxable revenue. So what, how did that affect the schools last year? They told us they didn't have the money. We cut 19 positions, 1 point, whatever, million dollars. And yet, it was the best economy ever. Everything was the highest. Unemployment was the lowest. So now, here we are, and we're faced with setting a budget and talking again about loss of revenue. It's, at the end of the day, it's a teacher and it's a student in a classroom. And my goal is to make sure that that's equitable across the district, and that it's no more than 20 for a first grader, especially those coming out of a half-day kindergarten program. So my message is, you know, to the towns that can't afford it, we've heard that before. We've heard that before. There's free cash, there's stabilization, there's federal aid, there's stimulus coming. It's not going to save the day for everyone. But we know what our E and D is, virtually nothing. This budget is bare bones. All I ask is that we meet our district goals. We set a goal of class sizes. I just ask us to focus on that. There's nothing, there's no wish list, there's nothing extra in this. We just need teachers to support the students, support the teachers. With that, I'm going to make the motion to amend. I'd like to set the budget at $55,320,238.
Second.
And that was made by?
Second.
I'm sorry. That was made by Dawn Byers, and it's an amendment. Do I have a second?
Mr. Boyce, second.
Mr. Boyce, thank you. Okay, continued discussion?
So I think...
The only, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
With my motion, the only other thing I would say is, when I look at this budget, I think of what it doesn't have. I'm not going to run down the whole list, because it would take too much time. But we know that the immediates are technology. This budget doesn't even add a single Chromebook to our high school, which only has 300 Chromebooks out of 1,100 students. So in full-day kindergarten, it doesn't add that. No. Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Jones? Did you just put your finger, your hand up? You're muted anyway, Mike. Unmute yourself.
No. No, I do not.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Boyce, go ahead.
Yeah, so I concur on everything that Ms. Byers said. Additionally, to Mr. Howard's point, we're just doing the budget right now. We just want that, let's just get that piece done. If revenues change, if additional monies come in, if FEMA, if this or that, we can deal with that. And, but this gives us that time to deal with it. We've been at $55,280,238 long enough that we've memorized it. And I think we just need to move and vote the budget for FY 21. Just the budget. It'd be nice just to move beyond that instead of having another five meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Scriven? I just think it's in the best interest of the district in the long run to not vote a budget right now. To, and I suggest this because I've heard from members of the Regional Agreement Committee that want to get back together, and we want to set a date for that. That's, that's in the best interest of the district in the long run, I believe, rather than setting a budget today, because there's no imminent reason to do so. Anyone else? Mr. Small?
I don't know what, what getting the Regional Committee together would actually accomplish. I mean, you know, realistically, I think that Regional Committee, what's going to come out of it or is going to be a statutory method that's outlined, in terms of how the budget will operate. You know, that's not going to be a savior. You know, if you don't do it as statutory, you leave it open every single year for someone to get up at town meeting and disagree with the method. Okay, because the method, if it's not statutory, has to be voted for town meeting each and every year separately. It's supposed to be anyway, separately of what the budget is. So I think that, you know, that's not going to be behavior. I think that we owe it to the FinComs, and we owe it to everyone to put forward what we expect a budget to be, and let them know there could be some fine tuning coming. But I can't see doing anything less than what's required. We can debate on the four teachers, et cetera, and everyone sure has different opinions. But I think that we need to move forward with something. I don't want to see a 112th. And the way I read the attorney's letter, and Jeff, maybe I'm wrong, and you spoke to him, but within 45 days of town meeting is when we're supposed to have the budget to them. We were already negligent in our... We were already negligent in our duties at first, but right now Whitman's is June fourth. So, you know, if we're kicking the can down the road, we're kicking it down a week or so. You know, it's not kicking it all that long. Uh, we, we need to do it. We have responsibility. That's my feeling.
Anyone else? Dan, did you have a question?
Mister Hayes, it's Ally.
Ally, go ahead.
I apologize.
And Ally to Mister Howard then, and Dan if he's, uh, go ahead. I can't see you, Ally, that's why.
No, I know, I don't have the camera on my computer.
Okay.
Um, it was lost in the move.
That's okay, just speak up.
Yep, so my question is, um, and I apologize, it's Passover, so I was in the middle of eating dinner with my family. What was the original motion? What was that number for?
Mister Small made a motion of fifty-five million, forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The amended number is fifty-five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and we will be voting the amendment first.
Thank you.
Did, you got that? Chris and then?
I did, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Ally. Chris, Howard, and then Mister Colletti. Dan, you're waving at me, I can see it now. Thank you.
So.
Good.
So a couple things. One, again, I think our charge is to do it right, not do it fast, right? If we wanna just throw a budget number of sixty-two million just for the sake of establishing a number, cause so we can say we established a number, we can certainly do something like that, but I think we need to do it right, and I think we need to be thoughtful. And to Dawn's point, yes, I know we've had some revenue challenges in the past, but this is, these are extraordinary times, right? So for those of you guys that don't know, I work for a bank, and I can tell you, we have deferred hundreds, well, actually well over thousands of auto payments over the last several weeks. This is nothing I have ever seen before in terms of impact. So again, I wanna make sure we get a budget, I wanna make sure it's the right budget, I wanna make sure that the towns will support it, and we do what we need to do to make sure we take care of our kids, and we make sure we have the right teachers that we need in order to, to move forward. So I just think prematurely just throwing out numbers, we're not doing our jobs. We're just taking the easy path of let's just throw out a number for the sake of throwing out a number, so. It's my two cents.
Dan? Dan, no, Dan's next, then Dawn, then Fred.
Okay, number one, um, if everybody can go to the bottom of the screen, hit Participants, it puts up the participants and the way you can raise your hand. We should be using that to chime in when you wanna be next, so Bob can see us raising our hand instead of talking over each other and trying to position into the thing. It's just a little button over there that says, you know, raise hand or lower hand? If you click on that.
Dan, I can see you coming.
That's probably gonna know. That might help out with some of the longevity here. Um, we do need to set a budget. Um, the unforeseen circumstances is down the road. Um, yes, we're not gonna have our lottery revenue like we used to see it because nobody's out gambling. Um, food seals are gonna be down, so the two towns use that. That's gonna be lost revenue. There's a lot of lost revenues coming in. That's not our issue. Ours is to set a budget for the school, so we can give that budget over to the FinComs and they can start working those numbers in with all these other additional losses. Your police fire, they're gonna be additional money because they need it for the, um, all, all the, all the gear and stuff they're buying for the, to, to go out and protect themselves. I mean, it's, these are all needed things, but ours is to come up with the school budget. We can always go down, we just can't be going back up, so tonight we should be setting something that's realistic, even though we probably know in our hearts, we're gonna take a major hit somewhere down the line in the next few months, because the, the money just won't be there for the entire Whitman and Hanson region. Um, but our, our job tonight is to set a budget so that the towns can start having realistic numbers, instead of, let's see what they do, let's see what they do. We're not here to see what the towns do. Technically, we're the third town, we're supposed to be running a business here, is educating the children. So if we can just set a budget tonight, pass it off to the towns, and get start crunching the numbers, that are gonna be very, very, very tough. Um, you know, waiting another week or two, you know, just set the budget tonight, and then as the numbers start coming in and we start forecasting, it's not like, um, we're gonna get a ton of money. All that's gone. You know, the, the state can't even get together and figure out what to do right now. But we have to go, because we are going to most likely hit a one-twelfth payment system right off the bat, and that goes off the last year's figures if we don't set something. So our job is at least try to get our budget in, whether the town's passing or not, that's up to the town meeting, but we do need to set the, the meeting. Uh, defer.
Dawn, you're next, and then Mister, Mister Small.
Thank you. I, I agree, Dan, we need to keep thinking about the students, because that's what we are elected for, for as school committee members. So Howard, people are deferring payments, but come August, maybe even May fourth, these students need to return to school, and they're gonna be in a classroom. Um, if we don't return to school this year, you've got half-day kindergarten students that have lost six months of learning. I already know from a first-grade teacher that students that attended a full year of half-day kindergarten, coming into first grade are below the benchmark for where they should start. They're already needing remedial services for that entire year, and some of them don't even finish at the benchmark, at the end of that first grade year. So loss of learning is so important, and I did want, um, to have our budget reevaluated based on what was presented from February to now, because life has turned upside down. So is there a different priority right now? What do we need to look at? Maybe there's something else in the budget we should be analyzing that we can reduce a cost there. I don't know the answers to that. Um, my last comment is regarding the Regional Agreement. Um, two years ago, the school committee unanimously approved that Regional Agreement. All nine members were present. Mister Lyneum, Kevin Lyneum at the time, wasn't attending or didn't attend that meeting, but you all did vote. You reviewed the Regional Agreement, you approved it with the statutory method in there. We know what happened after that, it went to town meetings, and it is no longer, um, you know, on the table, but at one point, you did all, all vote for it.
Mister Small and Mister Scriven?
Uh, I would hear from Jeff, uh, playing, you know, certain times that we live in, uh, how much of a peace of mind, if you're not mistaken, you know, to send a rift out first. So how much of a peace of mind?
Fred, we're only, Fred, not to interrupt you, but we're only hearing about every third word.
Uh, sorry, uh, the, uh, like.
The same thing's happening, Fred, we're only hearing every third word. I'm not trying to interrupt you, but I don't think the members can hear everything.
Is that any better? Is that any better?
That appears to be better, yes.
Okay. I'd like to hear from administration as far as how it would impact by having a budget, and at least give.
Fred, it's a third word again, we can't, we can't hear what you're saying. Jeff's trying to hear, and I'm trying to hear, and I got members shaking their head. They can't understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, text it. Text, text it in the chat, in the chat room.
Can you text it to Jeff in the chat room, Fred? And I'll go to Mister Scriven?
I can, I can. Different, uh, uh, different, uh, sort of.
We can't understand anything you're saying. Can anyone else?
Okay.
Mister Scriven?
I just, in the interest of the best, in the best interest of the district, I do, I, I don't think we need to establish a budget right now. I think we need to, you know, convene the Regional Committee, and we need to talk about what we can do, uh, given the current predicament that we're in. Um, I, you know, I will always wanna support, um, you know, reasonable class sizes, you know, teachers, absolutely, but I think we're, in order to be in our, give ourselves the best shot at servicing the, the kids in, in a district the way we want to, I think it's be prudent to hold off, um, on, on voting the budget right now.
Okay, Mister Small.
I'm back, and hopefully you can hear me?
Yeah, yeah, now we can hear you, everybody shaking their head, so I think everybody was having an issue with hearing.
What I wanted to ask.
You don't have to wave at me, guys. Can everybody hear Fred now good?
Yes.
Okay, I see everybody shaking their head.
What I wanted to do is ask the administration, ask Jeff, how much of a benefit, and isn't it a wise thing to have a budget sooner rather than later as well? Uh, he's gonna send out riffs, I think it's by May first, and, you know, nobody wants to see that happen. What happens if you have no idea what your budget is at that point in time? And wouldn't that give a little bit of peace of mind to our teachers and other employees? And I'm just gonna take two seconds and just wanna say publicly once, once again, our teachers are doing an incredible job in unforeseen waters, uh, reinventing the wheel, so to speak, and I just wanna give my heartfelt thanks once again, uh, because they've really done an extraordinary job.
Yeah, Fred, to answer your question, yeah, I, I'd like to have a budget. Uh, I'm not necessarily worried about the rift piece, because that's May first, and I would assume that we would have a working number by May first anyway. Um, I, I hear everybody with the, uh, with the teacher piece of it, I agree. I mean, the, the, the challenge that, that we're in right now, and, and this is what George and I have felt since December, we're in between a rock and a hard place. We wanna add staff, we wanna do what's best for our kids, but we also have been tasked by, by this committee to make sure we put forth a budget that can be absorbed by both communities. And I think this is where I'm, I'm nervous about any budget we put forth that won't be supported by one community or the other, and now that we're into June. And from what I read in the legislation that was passed today, a one-twelfth budget by July first is FY twenty numbers. And if we look at FY twenty numbers, we're going to riff forty-eight people as of May first. So I, I need a budget. Right now, either number isn't gonna do me any, any disservice. Um, I'd like to see the teachers in it, no question, but I also think the, the job of this committee is to advocate for kids, no, no, absolutely a hundred percent, but we also have to be mindful of what can be passed in either community. And Dan, uh, Colletti, we can actually go up, we set something today, the budget can go up and it can go down up until the time that we send the assessment to the community, and then we can reevaluate that assessment. It's different from, from what we've done in the past. Um, but I am, I am, I, I could use those four teachers, I ran in the numbers, um, as far as where we can impact. Duval, first and second grade, Indian Head, fourth grade, and next year Conley at fifth grade. Uh, Conley's fifth grade class, next year we'll have twenty-five kids per class. Indian Head's fifth grade class or fourth grade class, next year we'll have twenty-six kids per class. Duval's first grade class will have twenty-five kids per class. Duval's second grade class will have twenty-four kids per class, if we don't make any movement. Conley's third grade class will have twenty-three, maybe, or twenty-three point five, so somebody's gonna have twenty-four. We have a class size issue, and it's crossed the district. Um, high school classes are large, middle school classes are large. That's, that's what happens when you cut nineteen point five positions. Teachers who retired weren't replaced, teachers were, were moved, um, and I think trying to claw back. So I support, you know, it's, it's hard, I support both. I just, I'm, again, between a rock and a hard place, we've been, we've given, given both communities the same number since February. Um, I think they have a number. I don't know if I definitely need a budget today, we need it within the forty-five days. Uh, that's not helpful, but that's where I sit. We've done, I'm looking at George, same bat time, same bat channel, we've done this for the past seven weeks. The same number is back and forth. Um, it will help me to have a number, it won't help me to have a number that's not gonna be passed in a community, and I'm gonna be laying people off, and they're gonna have a false sense of security, that the school committee endorsed the budget, that's not gonna be passed. That's where I sit, and that's where the angst of my teachers are at, uh, working from home right now, in a new environment.
Okay, I have three hands raised. The first one is Chris. Chris, did you wanna speak again, or you just not take your hand down?
Which Chris, Bob?
Scriven, I'm sorry.
Yes, I did. Um, yeah, I, 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 I think that's important to consider what Jeff's, uh, describing there as a scenario, um, if we present a budget to the town that we don't think's gonna work. Um, you know, we had a Whitman Selectment at our meeting, asking for a number. We didn't have a formal number, we had a ballpark, and, and that was, that was said to be enough. Um, three weeks went by, and there was no dialogue between Whitman and Hanson. Um, that's concerning. I think, uh, from the beginning, I've looked to defer to the two towns. Uh, uh, my rationale was that they were gonna ultimately have to make a decision. Um, but I think we have to, um, think about what's in the best long-term interest of our district and do all we can to advocate for them.
Okay, Mike, you're up next, and then Ally, I see your hand up too. Mike?
Yep. I agree with, uh, Mister Scriven. I do not see the benefit of voting the budget today. Everyone has a rough idea what the number is, give or take. If you watch the Hanson School Committee, uh, Hanson, uh, Selectmen's meeting last night, you see the two towns are finally working together, they met, and there seems to be some movement. So as, I think Mister Scriven just reiterated, uh, if we vote something in tonight, and Hanson doesn't agree with it, you're gonna go to the one-twelfth budget anyways. So why don't we work together, find out something that everyone works with, and then actually vote? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Ally?
I just feel we've been kicking this can down the road for way too long now, and it's about high time we come to a decision. We know what the needs of the school are, we know what the needs of the district are, so why do we keep putting this off? Yes, we're in unprecedented times, and things have changed, but the needs of the school and the needs of the students and teachers have not changed. I say we move to vote.
Dawn, one more, and then we're gonna move to the vote and the amendment. You're muted, Dawn.
No, I was really just seconding her move to vote. No further comment.
Okay. You're voting on, I know that, uh, some people need to go shortly because it is Passover. The first vote that we're gonna be taking up is the amended budget from, to fifty-five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Does everyone understand that? That is the amendment made by Ms. Byers. Mister Boyce?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Mister Colletti?
Yes.
Mister, Chris Howard?
No.
No.
Dawn? Rob O'Brien?
No.
No. Chris Scriven? Fred Small? Fred, you're muted. Ally, Ally Taylor, excuse me, I'm sorry, Ally Taylor. Bobby Hayes, no. One, two, three, four, five, six, four. The amendment didn't carry. Now we're gonna vote on the budget. Fifty-five million, forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Mister Boyce?
Yes.
Dawn?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
No.
Mike Jones?
No.
Rob O'Brien?
No.
Chris Scriven?
No.
Mister Small?
Yes.
Ally Taylor?
No.
Bobby Hayes, no. Seven, three. We do not have a budget number yet.
Well, while we're on the subject of, uh, the budget, uh, assessment, can we pick a date, please, to recon, to convene the, uh, Regional Agreement Committee?
Yes.
As soon, as soon as possible, please? As soon as possible?
Okay, let me pull my phone out here, which I have it out, today's the eighth, fifteenth. Oh, I have that as, as tax day, I think I've got that wrong. Um, I think that's been moved, April fifteenth is a good date for those people.
Works for me.
Yes.
Everybody okay with it? I know everybody's not on it, but fifteenth is a good date, I'll have to check with the two boards of Selectmen, but let's tentatively set it for the fifteenth.
Thank you.
Wait a minute.
Can we do it like a three o'clock meeting?
Um, I don't think you can do it, although, Chris, uh, Chris Scriven, you, you furloughed out of work.
Correct, I'm available.
We're thinking maybe two o'clock in the afternoon?
Works for me.
Mr. Hayes?
Chris Howard? Ally?
I could, I could do three, I can't do two.
Okay. Ally, was that you?
Uh, yes, I still go to work every day. I won't be home until after three.
How about four?
Is she on that committee, though?
Are you on the committee? I think it's Chris.
You know what?
This is the Regional Agreement Committee.
Right.
I apologize, no, I am not.
Okay. Three o'clock. Yes.
When you're done with the, uh, schedule, would it be possible to take out of order April vacation? I don't.
Yes, I'll do it next because I know Fred and Ally have to go. Okay. Everybody understand that I will check tomorrow with the Selectmen's Office, uh, Jeff, well, Jeff Shaken said, and make sure that that's a viable date. Okay, next up is, um, April Spring Vacation Recession School Calendar Superintendent.
So, uh, what I'd like, uh, my recommendation to the committee, since you're, you set our school calendar, is that we continue to work and, and educate our kids remotely the four days during April vacation. That's set in calendar. That would, if you, if you amended the calendar for us to be in school through April vacation, our last day of school would be June 15th instead of June 19th. We would use those four days, uh, as, as full school days and that would, uh, be sufficient for the common, for, for Desi and our students meeting the 180-day school cycle. So that's, that would be my recommendation. The Commissioner of Education has left it to a local decision, which means you as the school committee to, uh, to, to own your calendar, so to speak.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes, I have, um, Chris, Mike, and Ally, your hands are still raised. Um, are you guys done? Because Mr. Colly's up.
Sorry.
Sorry.
And then, and then Mr. Dan?
No, I would just make a motion right now to amend the April vacation calendar to remove those, make them a school day, get the school out earlier, you know, everybody's locked up that timeframe anyways.
Oh, I'll, Mr. Small will second for discussion and then I have discussion?
All right, Mr. Small seconded, Mr. Colly moved the motion. Mr. Small seconded it, Mr. Small.
Uh, just, uh, Jeff, as, as far as the union position, are our teachers, are our teachers okay with that? Yeah.
Spoke to the association two weeks ago and had another follow-up with Kevin and Cindy today. They're on board with that as well. That's why the recommendation came with full support of the association.
Okay, I'm sorry. I meant to cut out on that part, so I apologize.
The, the association fully endorses this recommendation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Kevin, Kevin, uh, Cindy, do you have any comment on that scene as Mr. Small brought it up? And I can see that you're in the Zoom meeting.
Oh, sure, no, I, I, I agree. I think that's a, a great idea here and I think, um, it would problems, all of a sudden we're starting to develop a routine. And then, um, for all our students, then, okay, put it off for four or five days, then pick it up again. I think we stick with it and then if the commission, um, allows us to it, local control, I think we go and get out the, uh, June 15th.
Agreed.
Cindy, you agree?
Yep. Yep, uh, learning would be more valuable now, believe it or not, than end of June.
Thank you, guys.
Any further discussions before we move to the vote? I don't see any hands raised. Everybody good? No further discussions? Mr. Boyce? Ms. Byers? Mr. Colly? Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven? Mr. Small? Ally Taylor, Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Hayes, yes. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Jeff, would you like to go to, uh, back to your report of remote learning plan and school closure dates?
Yes, um, sure. Does, does anyone, uh, it's Fred and Ally checking out?
Yeah, I do need to leave. Thank you.
Ally?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I am, thank you.
Thank you very much for your patience.
So, uh, we were in day three of our, our formalized remote learning plan. Uh, so far, feedback, especially on social media has been very good as far as what our staff is doing. I think our principals have done a great job of messaging, uh, the plan from their, from their particular school, from their grade level to parents. Um, I just want, I, I want to recognize that I, I feel what parents are going through right now with their kids and structure and the amount of anxiety and unknowns. So, we acknowledge that as a district and we're going to continue to work hard to make sure your kids are engaged to the point that they can be engaged in meaningful activities um, with less, less stress on that. So the plans are, are working. Uh, we still don't have a, we're still have a target date of May 4th to return to school. Food Services is still, uh, providing for our, our community members. We moved to a app system where parents sign up on an app. Uh, we are delivering food to families who cannot pick up food, but we modified, uh, our, our distribution procedure to a, to a Tuesday, uh, to a, excuse me, a Monday, Thursday distributions. Uh, kids are getting meals at, at three days at a time, both breakfast and lunch. Nadine Doucette has done a, has done a remarkable job of, uh, making sure that our families are fed. She's even breaking off into a choose what you would like to have for lunch and breakfast on her menu now with the application, instead of just a sun butter sandwich and, and some of the staples that we've had. So, she's done a, a phenomenal job of making sure our families that were, were needy and have now become needy because of this situation are being fed. Facilities and operations, um, we slowed down on custodial cleaning at this point. Uh, a member of our facilities team has a significant other spouse that has tested positive for COVID-19. Um, so we have most of our SJ employees under quarantine right now because they were cleaning buildings. Um, that came into effect as of Monday. Um, so we've halted daily cleaning or those deep cleans, uh, to this point. So we don't have custodial staff in the building, uh, that are, are, are own and we're going to work with SJ Services to make sure that we have staff if needed. As you know, all buildings are, have been shut down. We have a, a bare-bones staff. Uh, most of us are working remotely from home, so it's really not a big deal as far as cleaning. Uh, our operations group in technology and facilities are still here. Uh, on a skeleton crew, we're making sure the buildings are still functioning. If there's any breaks, any damages, any, any, anything to do with the structure of the building, we have our, our facilities and maintenance group on board. Um, we're, we're business as usual to the best we can be. I think what's important now is the district maintains and I thank you for the April vacation, uh, change and allowing us to continue to go to school. I think that's in the best interest of our kids and our staff and our community members. It's also good for social distancing to make sure that we can, we can really have an effect on that curve and flatten the curve. If we had kids out during break, you know, their parents would be wanting, especially if the weather's nice, it would be harder to keep them contained. I think our teachers can do a good job of keeping that structure and that schedule for them. Um, waiting to hear from the commissioner, uh, and from the governor if there's any change in, in the decision on May 4th, but that's the goal, of, goal of where we're at right now and we'll make some contingencies if, um, if we're later, if we, if we move that date.
That was for the, okay, Jeff, just going back, there was a figure thrown out, I believe it was at last meeting. And was that just a gesture figure of, uh, we talked about E and D and cleaning schools and it could cost up to 100,000? That was not a set in stone figure?
No, I, in fact, while you guys were discussing budget, I asked George, we're, we're six feet apart. I asked George if we have a number yet and we haven't gotten the bill yet. I don't know what that bill will be because we actually haven't completed that deep clean. Uh, and I don't know if that's going to be a modification or not, so we, we guesstimated up to 100,000. I don't know what the bill is actually going to be. Uh, the one thing I did want to add too is we passed out, what, close to 700 Chromebooks to families in district and it was actually, uh, a family sent a nice thank you card to our operations group yesterday, which was really heartfelt and, and well-received from the guys and, and the ladies down in technology that are working really hard to make sure that those Chromebooks were distributed. But yeah, the E and D figure or the number of that bill, I don't have it and it was up to a guesstimate of 100 grand. I don't know if that's going to come to fruition of 100,000 now.
Okay. Any other questions for the superintendent? I personally have had some interaction with teachers and with some students and with some parents and I'd like to thank the teachers also. They're working very, very, very diligently in a very, very difficult situation that, as we all know, it's, uh, this, this virus thing has been holding people off from jobs and money's getting tight with everybody and, and, uh, maybe tempers are flaring a little bit and, and I think maybe with all the children home, people are getting a better respect for what teachers do. Not that they don't respect teachers anyway, because we all love our teachers, but they're getting a better respect of what it's like being in school every single day when you have your child home. So, thank you to the teachers and the staff and the cleaning crews and, and and all of the above that have been working very diligently in the buildings. It's, it's been, as we've said, none of us in our lifetime have ever seen anything like this. We will be going, we need an executive session this evening. Public body will convene in an executive session to review and approve executive session minutes. Public body may convene an executive session on the original purpose for the executive session or it may convene an executive session pursuant to General Law C 3821A-7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special or federal grant in aid requirement to purpose seven citing the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law C 30A 22F and G. We will be voting executive session minutes. That will be all, what we are voting. When we come out of executive session, the only vote we will be taking will be to adjourn. So I want to thank everyone who's listened to the meeting tonight. I hope it's been informative. I'd like to thank the two ladies who wrote in their comments about the teachers. I know it was very heartfelt. This is a tough decision, so I want to thank everybody for their patience and for their input. Thank you all. Good night. We will be coming out of the executive session to only adjourn. Thank you all.